We all set? All right. Evening, folks. Thanks for coming. We're gonna call this one to order. We'll start off the meeting tonight with a roll call. It looks like all the board members are here and present. I'm gonna invite you all to please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know we have some, some new members out there because I could hear you projecting the Pledge of Allegiance. So this is a good thing. All right, looking for an approval of the agenda.
Some of them.
Second.
Oh, okay. I'll give the second to Don. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. We're gonna move into the recognition of student, staff, and public. And this evening, I think I can do this without my glasses. We have, there we go. "The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners and the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. This evening, I would like to introduce the Droolin Moose." So if Missy and Amy could come on up to this particular microphone over here. Yep, right over there.
I'd like to thank the school board and Superintendent Fujitaki for inviting us here tonight. This is a real honor for Missy and I. We grew up in Bloomington. We're Kennedy High School graduates, and we're proud to say that we're running our business here and still living in Bloomington. And I'm gonna let Missy tell you a little bit about what we're doing for the community here. Is this right, Dick? Is this what we should be doing?
You do whatever you do best.
Ever since we started Droolin Moose and actually Edition Three, our screen printing company, for 23 years, we love this city. I have always loved everything about this city, mainly the people. This is a, a big town with a very small feel, and other people have told us that, too. So as we continue our business, Droolin Moose is, the Bloomington store is actually just three years old, so it's, it's quite new. But our focus has been doing good business as well as giving back to the community. We have always had that opinion. We do it in all kinds of ways, but our favorite way is to give chocolate. That's one of our favorite ways. But it's also to take some of our income that we make and give it back in the form of products that help the community, specifically encouraging kids to further their interests, not just in school, but actually the outdoors, too. So one of our big things that we contribute to each year is Camp Coda, which oddly enough, I never knew it even existed until two years ago, 'cause we had a family cabin we went to. But we contacted Greg Botman out of the city and really wanted to enhance that program however we could. So we end up donating, actually flashlights every year for all the participants in Camp Coda, just to add to the experience for that overnight event that they have. We also take our screen printing company and use that to benefit anybody that we can as well. If anybody knew Hannah Hint, that Washburn teacher that had just passed away recently, she was actually a good friend of mine. I wanted to take our, what we could do for the community to tie it together, but also to raise money for her family. So since we have the screen printing shop in the back of Droolin Moose, we donated all of the T-shirts for Hannah's family to raise money for their cause. So what we do is like to take all of the products that we can and help people pursue whatever they want to pursue. We have two other stores, one in St. Louis Park and one in Burnsville, and we hope to do the same thing there. We're just not as involved there, 'cause we both still live in Bloomington and we know so many people here. But I just love this city. I just think it just keeps getting better and better, and I don't think there's any limit to what we can do as a team, and that's what I want to keep encouraging. Using chocolate, using T-shirts, using design, using original concepting to move people to want to be a part of it. So that's our whole goal as a company. And then to add on to that, for what we do in the schools, or that we donate baskets or chocolate for overnight parties for the, for Kennedy High School. Any way that we can get the, the chocolate into the hands of the people, that they can make more money for the school or the organization that they're wanting to raise money for. So I'm a parent here. I have two children, one now here at Oak Grove Middle, very exciting, and also at Normandale Hills. So that's where everything started, and now it just keeps expanding, 'cause like Missy said, the community involvement is just huge here. And so now we can touch so many more schools. It's very fun that way. I have one more thing to say to anybody that wants to be creative, especially, I think there's some kids, you guys look like kids back there, that creativity in any realm, whether it's graphics or writing or business, I don't care if it's finance, any kind of creativity people have, use it, because it makes a huge difference in the way people view business, relationships, schools, education, everything. It makes people notice what you're doing. So any kind of creativity, don't be afraid that people are gonna judge you for it. You just have to use it and put it out there. And then we have some samples if you guys want to try. So we'll leave those here.
Sample.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Missy and Amy. Looks like you... It looks like you have a fan here on the board. Normally, we don't let ball caps at the, at the dinner table, as it were.
No, and it was just, just temporary. Strange that I would wear it tonight when we have this sponsored friend here, but, but these hats are available at Droolin Moose. And either you buy 100 different containers of food, or $20, I think you could get a hat. Right, and, and I've been proud to be an investor into Droolin Moose for quite a few years now, so that's, that's a good thing.
Thanks again for coming. Okay, the, the next, next one on our list here are the Rotary Activities here. And I'm looking at my notes here. I'm looking for Don Stiles, Terri Stirwalt, did I say your name right? And then Debbie Belfry. So come on up and let us know what, what you have for us this evening.
Chairman Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and fellow board members, we are very pleased to be here and honored that you'd have us recognized here. We represent the two Bloomington Clubs of Bloomington, the Rotary Clubs, and we have a Noon Club. Terri Starwalt and myself are members of that, and the president of the Daymakers is Debbie Belfry, who I'm sure you're very familiar with. I handed out some sheets here because we were asked to come talk about the STRIVE program. So I'm gonna briefly talk about the first four, touch on the first four. Under number five, you'll see those are grants, again, some organizations that you're probably familiar with. Number six is metro-wide organizations we're involved with, and number seven are international organizations we're involved with, all of them having to do with youth, because Rotary is focused on our youth. The STRIVE program stands for Students Taking a Renewed Interest in the Value of Education. It's a mentor program where we try to motivate eligible students in their senior year to discover their own strengths and talents and increase their personal and academic achievement. We focus on students that are struggling for whatever reason academically. It could be a death in the family. It could be just academic struggles. But we try to encourage them to find their talents so that they can be successful after they leave high school. On the next two pages, you'll see, first of all, a description of the STRIVE program and the scholarships that we offer. There are over $12,000 given out in scholarships every year from these two Rotary Clubs. In addition, on the third page there is the typical classes that we give throughout the year, and these are the topics that we cover. Again, they're to prepare the students for life after high school. That takes care of high school. Then we have a Reading to Children program, formerly the International Kids Club. But we read to the children, and we help these families and children that have English as their second language to better use language in school and elsewhere. We've partnered with Normandale Community College Service Learning, so we're involving both the public schools and the Normandale Community College. The third item is Pack to School, which we just did last week. We package some school supplies for a couple of the middle and elementary schools in town. And the new one that's coming up this next month is a Student Hunger Project for students that do not have food for over the weekends. We're going to provide some food packs for them to take home over the weekends, and we'll be doing that throughout the year. Under number five, some of the items, the organizations you're probably familiar with that we supply funds to are Companies to Classroom, the Education Foundation of Bloomington, Oasis for Youth, Normandale, Bloomington Arts Center, Treehouse, Veep, et cetera. I'll now let, oh, I should say one more thing. On the STRIVE program, one of the, the extra benefits that we get from funding comes from RBCU, and that's why I'm very happy to introduce Terri. Do you want to say a word about that?
Well, thank you. As I'm sure you're aware, Rotary is a group of business and community leaders, and it takes the support of these businesses and communities and educational institutions to make the programs we do work. For an example, we just completed a joint venture, for lack of a better word, with Normandale to help us, Community College, to help us with our STRIVE program. So I would encourage, or I do encourage, the fact that as many businesses, as many schools, as, as, the more we can get, all these areas collaborating within our community, I think we'll end up with a much, much better product for our end customer, which is the student. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm just going to also mention and highlight the collaborations that go on between Rotary here and the Bloomington community, not only with our business partners and our college partners that are located within Bloomington, but as you can see in what you have heard, also aligns with our pathways to graduation, because many of these projects are for the students and to help them move on beyond their secondary education into their college and career readiness. So you will also notice that you have heard from the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We also partner with them on the Future Leaders Program, and you've seen presentations on that with our business students at Jefferson and Kennedy, and our Rotary Clubs help support that program. So it is very much a collaborative effort. Kennedy and Jefferson, as many of you are aware, also have a Senior Achievement Recognition Program in the spring, and Rotary Clubs help support that dinner so that our students can be recognized in a variety of ways on that particular evening for a variety of things: academics, leadership, civic engagement, arts, and athletics. So we, we all collaborate to make this work for our students in the community. The Bloomington Daymakers also support a teen job fair in the spring, and we work with Bloomington United for Youth and our Career Centers to help our students prepare, learn how to do a job interview, come to the job fair, meet with employers. Many of them interview that evening, and many of them walk away with a job for the summer or a job that will help them continue throughout their next years in school, whether it be secondary school or in their college careers. So as you can see, we are also very deliberate in how we align our projects with our students, with our community, both education communities, our community members like the Chamber, and, and our business partners. The Bloomington Daymakers are a smaller club, and so we have always, always partnered with Pearson with, as a business partner for our STRIVE program. And so they help support us in that way, and we together can support our students at Jefferson at that STRIVE program. So the two clubs work together quite a bit, as you can tell, and also collaborate our work together in the community. So thank you tonight, for letting us be here tonight, gentlemen. We appreciate the time that we can talk about what we can do together in this community.
Any questions? Anyone have any questions? Thank you so much for what you do and what you do for our community. All right, move on to the next here. Is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, let's see now. I'm looking into the back here. Snuggled into the back two rows, it looks like there's a bunch of seniors from some of our, two of our high schools. As a requirement of our 12th grade government class, our students are asked to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things that they may attend or city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political process and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. That's a mouthful. So it looks like we have some high school seniors here, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna offer an invitation for you to come up to this microphone that, that gentleman we're just at. Tell us your name, tell us the school you go to, and the teacher that you're, whose class you're in. If you don't want to come up, you don't have to, but we'll offer the, the opportunity for you to come on up and say hi. So those that are brave, that microphone is on over there.
Hi, I'm Austin Glend. I'm a senior at Jefferson. I represent Mr. Storlein.
Hi, I'm Evie. I'm a senior at Jefferson High School, and I'm also from Mr. Storlein's class.
Hi, I'm Jessie, and I'm a senior at Jefferson, and I also represent Storlein's class.
Hi, I'm Anna. I'm a senior at Jefferson, and I'm from Storlein's class.
Hi, I'm Maddie Ross. I'm also a senior at Jefferson, and I represent, represent Storlein's class.
Hi, I'm Christina. I'm also a senior at Jefferson, and I'm also from Storlein's class.
I'm Morgan. I'm a senior at Jefferson, and I'm also from Storlein's class.
I'm Ian. I'm also a senior at Jefferson, and I represent Storlein's class.
Hello, my name's Nick. I go to Thomas Jefferson High School, and my teacher is Storlein.
Eric Paulson, Jefferson, and Storlein again.
All right, well, we appreciate any time we have visitors, and our, our students, as part of their class requirement, they're, they're asked to stay in this meeting for an hour. After 60 minutes and a half-second are passed, you're free to stand up and get your agenda signed. I think Rick Kaufman would be more than willing to, to sign that. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. You're also welcome to share your comments with us. You can get to us by email. Let us know what you think of these things. Let us know if they're, they're way too boring, if they're really exciting, or if they're somewhere in between. All right? So anyways, thank you very much for coming. All right, we're looking for approval of Part A, as is. We have a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, now we move into Part B. So you'll have to turn your agenda over, those that are keeping track. First one up is a cooperative sponsorship for Jefferson and Kennedy Alpine Ski Program. Who would like to read this one?
Chair.
Tom.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a cooperative sponsorship for the Jefferson and Kennedy Alpine Ski Program effective with the 2014-2015 school year.
Second.
All right. To help us understand this, we have Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox.
Thank you, Chairman Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. In your materials, there are two cooperative sponsorship agreements this evening. The Minnesota State High School League allows two or more member schools to join together for an activity or sport when participation numbers are such that it's possible to field only one team. Bloomington has, Bloomington has done this in several sports, and tonight we're bringing you these renewal agreements for skiing. The first is for cooperative sponsorship in Alpine skiing. While students from both of our high schools are eligible to participate, the host school will be Jefferson. Administration is recommending approval of the Alpine Skiing Cooperative Sponsorship Agreement.
All right, thank you, Chris. Any questions? All right, we move to vote on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, looks like we're gonna keep you at the spot there, Chris. Next one up is a cooperative sponsorship for Jefferson Kennedy Nordic Ski Program. Who would like to read that one in? Jim.
Chair, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves a cooperative sponsorship for the Jefferson and Kennedy Nordic Ski Program effective with the 2014-2015 school year.
Second.
All right, Don got that one. Chris, what do you have for us?
This is just the second agreement for cooperative sponsorship. It is for Nordic skiing. And again, while students from both high schools can participate, Jefferson will be the host school. Administration is recommending approval.
Any questions on this one? Yep, go ahead.
I know in some sports, sometimes when they have a cooperative team like this, they ski for that host school. But when it gets into tournaments, do they have to revert back to the school that they're enrolled in for participation in the state tournaments?
Yep, and that varies by sport. So if there's an individual competition or part of the, the section or state tournament, then yes, they participate for their home school. And if it's a team, they are allowed to remain together as the team through state competition.
And that's typical for all of the cooperative teams for schools, wrestling, gymnastics, and so on.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you happen to know the numbers of how many students are on each of these different programs, Alpine and Nordic?
I don't, but we certainly can get that for you as a follow-up.
Yep. Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next one up is the Joint Powers Agreement for High School Concurrent Enrollment Program at Kennedy High School, and Chris Lennox is gonna help us out with that. Who'd like to read this?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Maureen.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a joint powers agreement between the Board of Trustees of the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities on behalf of Normandale Community College and ISD 271 Kennedy High School for the High School Concurrent Enrollment Program effective September 2nd, 2014 through June 10th, 2015.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Chris, what can you tell us about this?
Thank you, Chair Bergstrom. This resolution is a renewal of the Joint Powers Agreement with Normandale Community College. Students who successfully complete concurrent enrollment courses receive both high school and college credit, and for the 2014-15 school year, the concurrent enrollment courses will be college algebra, pre-calculus, and world literature. Administration is recommending approval of the agreement.
All right. Any questions on this one? Yeah, Rick.
I was gonna ask, how is this different than PSL?
Courses are actually taught by our instructors at the site as opposed to students leaving and going to the college campus.
Makes it a little easier for travel. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, now, next up is... Policy, Policy Review. We're looking for a second reading. Who wants to read this one? This is 510.1. Am I on the right one?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Nellie.
It's been resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of Policy 510.1, Student Eligibility in Activities.
Second.
All right, Maureen got the second. Chris is just gonna stay right there.
Staying, staying right here.
What can you share with us?
Well, tonight, we have the second reading of Policy 510.1, and there have been no changes to the policy since the first reading happened back on August 25th. So Administration is recommending approval.
All right. Any questions, comments before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now Rod gets to come up here. This is Second Reading of Revised Policy 720 Vending Machines. Who'd like to read that one? Don.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the second reading of Revised Policy 720 Vending Machines.
Second.
All right. Rod, what, what can you tell us on this one?
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, there's really no significant change to this policy. It was just some grammatical changes that we wanted to make to it, and those have been updated.
Somebody's computer have the hiccups over there?
Needs something from the vending machine.
Any... Any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next one up is Policy 213, and we're recommending that this one is deleted. Who would like to read this one? Rick?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the deletion of Policy 213. School Board Citizens Advisory Committees have passed the course.
Second.
All right, and Don's got the second. All right, Rick Kaufman, what can you tell us about this?
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board, as you know, we've been going through an ongoing review process, and as we reviewed this policy, we believe it's obsolete and therefore can be deleted. The board already has the authority given to it by the state legislature for, or state statute for establishing committees' task forces, and it certainly has the option to do that as well ongoing. So we would recommend that the policy be deleted, and we did share this initially at our August 25th study session.
Okay, seems pretty straightforward. Any questions, comments before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Now we're down to number five, last part on our Part B, which is a, an opportunity that has presented itself to perhaps extend an invitation to Myron Orfield to come and speak to us. Couple of board members, Don and Tom, had, had listened to Mr. Orfield speak, and apparently independently had shared their, their interest. Is that fair to say with the superintendent? And the superintendent has asked me if, if we, the board, might want to extend an opportunity to have Mr. Orfield come and speak to us. So that's, that's my summary of the background of how that got to me. Any, Jim?
Maybe Director Steiglaff or Director Bennett could share a little bit about. I know we've got enough information that was emailed to us by the superintendent on a variety of things, but what was the nature, or the brief summary of the nature of his, his speech to... his speech to whatever group it was?
You go ahead.
You go first. No, you.
It's been a while since we were there, so you know, I think he was probably limited that night because the topic was achievement gap, and it was in another school district that we attended, so but he had just really good information as far as demographics and and, you know, had issue, you know, he had discussions around housing and around demographics and just some of the areas that affect achievement gap. So we just thought he had good information. He was someone that our superintendent, I think, was familiar with already, and it has
Sorry, Dawn, can you lean into your mic just a little? Thanks.
I said he was someone that the superintendent, I think, was already familiar with, but being new, I had not heard him speak before, so.
Okay, Tom, any, did she summarize brilliantly or?
Okay. From what I remember, you know, it was several months ago, so it's kind of hard to recollect exactly. I mean, I think there was a good conversation about charter schools, and I think there'd be something good that he could bring to the board and kind of give his presentation maybe at a board meeting or at a study session or something.
Okay. All right, Jim?
Well, the reason I raise the question is because I've known Myron Orfield for years too. As he has crusaded for a variety of housing differential, you know, affordable housing and integration and some of these things like that, and realizing that that it kind of moved to the background, I'm just wondering if there's a new emphasis that's coming out now, or if he is just trying to gather more and more people. I realize that whatever document Rule 3535 is is subject to some questions now, and so if it's if it's necessary that he needs to have a school board or a city or county or somebody lead the parade, or at least be an official entity to say, yeah, we want to have this proceed, then, you know, then I guess it's kind of like, wow, we need to hear from him more in a joint session with maybe Richfield or somebody else like that on how he plans to pursue it.
Yeah, I know he has a couple of petitions out, and he's looking for somebody to sign on, so. I've been aware of Mr. Orfield for the last decade, probably. Can't say that I'm an ardent follower of him, but he does he does know how to use one of these microphones. He does know where the cameras are, so he's kind of hard to miss when he's speaking. A very passionate person. I think that if we do decide to invite him here, we need to be aware of where his conversation may go. It's kind of like inviting a Formula One race car driver to come and drive your tricycle really slow. You know, I just don't know if he can do that. So he may bring with him his years and years. I know he spent ten years in the House of Representatives. He spent one term as a senator. He's got a law degree. He's been around. So he's got a lot of opinions. He's interested in open enrollment. He's also interested in charter schools. So, I mean, he can go everywhere. So if we do make this invitation, we need to know what it is we're inviting him for. If we just say, come and speak because we like to hear you speak, we have to be careful what we're asking for. So, yeah, Superintendent?
Yeah, I brought this to the board because Mr. Orfield would like school districts to sign some actions that he plans to take. I learned some new things. I've sent out three written communications to all of you. Today, I learned new information, and I learned this by talking to the Superintendent in Richfield, Stevenowski. Mr. Orfield told me that he would like the city of Richfield to file the applicant, file the petition and have school districts sign it. He also would like to have school districts sign his HUD complaint about discrimination. Those are the two actions he plans to take. Mr. Unowski said that his understanding is that the city of Richfield and the school district of Richfield will only sign if Osseo City and School District and Hopkins City and School District will also co-sign the petition and complaint. And all this thing needs to be done by October because that's Myron's deadline. So that's, it's all contingent upon those things happening. And I'm not sure if now I know that Mr. Unowski only thought it was a petition about charter schools, and I told him it's also a petition to have open enrollment subject to Administrative Rule 3535. And there's also a complaint to the HUD about housing discrimination. He said he wasn't aware of those things, so he's gonna have to do more research on those things because I he doesn't know if the city has that understanding. Everybody thinks it's just about charter schools, and it's, the scope is bigger than that. But it's an opportunity, maybe there's an opportunity to talk to Myron about limiting the scope of what he wants to do. Because if the cities and school districts don't want to sign this broad scope action, maybe a narrow scope action just addressing charter schools may be the way to get things moving. So I thought that having Myron come here to address the board about these actions could help clarify, help you make, take a position on his request. However, I'm not sure what the request is based upon my conversation right today with Mr. Unowski. He said he's gonna call me back. He has a meeting next week with his, with the city, and he said he'll let me know what happens from that conversation, whether the city's gonna move forward or not.
Okay.
So, one possibility is we wait to hear what Richfield's gonna do, and then we decide when to invite him.
Okay. Jim?
Realizing the past activities that Mr. Orfield's been into, I guess my concern would be if we were to go ahead and say, oh, that'd be interesting, let's hear about it. It could be misconstrued and in the newspapers and whatever else that Bloomington is supporting Mr. Orfield's plans. And that wouldn't necessarily be the case, as much as we're just suggesting we'll have an open session or forum or whatever you want to call it to have him speak on the particular issue, charter schools, open enrollment, or whatever it was that we first thought it might be about, and then have it be that way. But as the superintendent said, it could evolve into something more than that, and then we would be maybe misidentified as being a supporter or dissenter. I don't know how it would be interpreted, but that's my concern.
Okay. All those things are possible. Any other conversation? Are we interested in perhaps waiting and seeing what happens with Richfield? We're not making any decisions tonight. This is just a conversation. So. What are we, what are we thinking?
Are we gonna have enough time to wait and think and then listen and then proceed?
I don't think the the COVID deadline is Mr. Orfield's deadline. I don't think it's an absolute deadline. There's a target date he's set. I think there's some other things he has to get in place first, and we really should follow the other cities' lead, because I'm not sure where our cities at. I don't think they even know about this action.
I get the sense that and I may be wrong, but I get the sense that nobody really wants to be the first one to put the pen to paper. So.
I don't know. I haven't talked to the other cities.
Okay. Well, why don't we, why don't we wait for a little bit? We'll see what happens. In the meantime, we can do some more research. We can look into what Mr. Orfield has had to say in recent past, maybe the last two, three years. See if it stays consistent. Again, I've been reading his stuff for the last ten years, and it's interesting, but it it does tend to kind of go everywhere. So if we can find a topic that might fit what we're trying to do here, maybe something that's tied to World's Best Workforce, the work that's coming up for us, something that fits that type of conversation, then maybe we can, we can extend the opportunity or the offer for him to come and speak on this one topic. And we'll see if we can corral such a high-energy individual and keep him going on one topic. How does that sound? All right. All right, now we're moving into board member reports. It's an opportunity for board members to share what they've been up to since the last time we've been here in front of the microphones and the cameras. Anyone like to start this one? What have we been up to, individually, collectively?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Maureen.
I attended a company's classrooms meeting today. Always looking for funding. We did serve over eight hundred teachers the first two weeks before school started, so that's like a record. What else? I visited Indian Mounds and I visited Ridgeview. Just to tell them they looked great on TV. We've had such wonderful press lately.
Yeah.
And I went to the football game with my fellow board members last week.
All right. All right, anybody else?
I'll go. Or are you going?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, I do have a few things here. First one, the Legislative Committee met with Superintendent Fujitaki, Dr. David Haystad, and Rick Kaufman about a week and a half ago, and, you know, we discussed a few topics of interest for the Legislative Committee and for the board. And those topics were a proposal that Dr. Haystad has to fund a pilot project on his PT ads concept. That was one. The second one, it is something that Senator Patricia Torres Ray seems to have an interest for the coming legislative session. What we initially thought was on teacher diversity ended up being a lot more. It was broader than that. But anyway, I had the opportunity to meet with Senator Patricia Torres Ray this past week in order to find a little bit more information about what her idea is for this. And basically, what I understood from that conversation was that she's looking into repositioning the teaching profession in a way that some components can be included. And I will explain that later to you, but basically, what she's looking into is recruiting of teachers, retention of teachers, and other components as language and cultural relevance and competence. One of the big concerns I think that she has, and then, you know, part of what why she is looking into all of this is because there is a concern about recruiting teachers in rural areas, rural areas. So that's mostly where the concerns are going to. The other topic that we discussed during our Legislative Committee meeting was regarding a plan that the commissioner seems to have to pursue full funding for universal pre-K programming. And the last one, we talked about fact that MDE has formed a Q-Cam Committee. And I don't know if I need to give this information yet. Okay, I will, I keep that one. But that was number four. So, basically, you know, we have a few topics that we're discussing here and there. We don't have all the information completed yet. There's some things that still need to be done, and we will continue to meet as a committee with Superintendent Fujitaki, and we will continue to provide more updates and more information, clarification of each one of those. All right, and then the next one. I attended the AMSD meeting last Friday where there was a forty-year celebration where all the former AMSD chairs and executive directors were recognized, and so our dear Arlene Bush happened to be there as well, you know, being recognized, of course. And there was also a guest speaker. They had Bill Morris. And Director Aliva will give you more, more information about that. And the last one, the football game. I attended the football game too. That's it.
All right, who wants to? I thought I saw hands going up earlier.
There was no Bloomington United Youth Meeting last month. So the next meeting is the annual business meeting on October 28th. And then, as Director Corbin had mentioned, we both attended the AMSD meeting on Friday where Dr. Bill Morris from Morris Leatherman Company spoke, and he had a lot of great charts and graphs like he always does. One of the interesting ones was they did a survey on automatic well, one of the questions was the automatic renewal of existing school referenda. And right now, there's fifty-one percent support for that, which really surprised me. Said the reasoning was, people said, well, if you're not changing anything, why do we have to go vote again? Where the opposition was, well, this is our way to tell you if we agree with what you're doing with our money. But the fact that it was a fifty-fifty split was really surprising to me. Another question, increasing the dropout age to age seventeen. Fifty-five percent opposed it. There's very little support for that. And also, one of the things that I really got out of it was the way that they word questions, he said, can really skew the results. So for instance, he says if we ask people about what they think about high-stakes testing, he says you'll get overwhelming people against it. However, if they ask about competency tests, now all of a sudden, you have a lot of support. So what I got out of the, out of the meeting was really, any of these things where you have support or disagreement, a lot of times, it's just how you ask the question. So, I don't know if any of the numbers I gave you before were actually accurate, because if we changed how we asked the question, people maybe would, would give us a different answer. But yeah, so it was, it was interesting, and so I guess what I'd say is when we do our own surveys, we'll have to be mindful of that same phenomenon.
All right. Dawn, you had your hand up.
Yes, I also attended the Legislative Committee meeting, and I was at Family Fest at Pond. And then I went to Back to School Night at four of our elementaries. And at the first day of school, I was at Bellevue Elementary greeting students and parents for the hour as they were coming in. They were there really early. There were people there at eight o'clock waiting for school, so it was great, exciting for the first day. Then I served lunch at Oak Grove Elementary that same day. And then I attended the PTSA leadership meeting here. And I also attended the football game with, almost all of us were there together. And I also wanted to say that at the last time we think we were here, Dick challenged all of us on TV to the ice bucket challenge, so I did complete my ice bucket challenge. And I, in turn, challenged Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox and Director of Student Services Eric Melby. And I did see the whole group of them on some media from the school district, a whole line of administrators getting the ice bucket challenge. Thank you, Dick, for that. Chilling water.
I did see your clip, by the way. It did, it came through, some miracle.
So it's a video of you somewhere doing this?
Yeah, but we won't put it on.
I have a copy of it.
It does. Dick saw it.
For a price.
Tom?
At the Health Association Negotiations meeting that we're supposed to have today was postponed due to an illness of someone on the committee, and a date hasn't been scheduled for to have that meeting. Hopefully, it'll be next couple of weeks or so. And just a reminder to all you board members, on Thursday, the Parent Advisory Council is having their first advisory meeting for early childhood, and they always welcome board members, and they always have refreshments and goodies, so if you guys are free, come on over to Pond from six-thirty to eight, and they would love to have you there. I'm sure Dick will be there, and I'll be there.
I will be there.
And that's it.
All right, Jim?
Well, just as a summary or conclusion, I said with all these activities and everything else that gone on last week, and it's gonna be going on this week, there's so many exciting things. The energy level in the community is really high. You know, it's so much fun to go back to school. It's kind of hard to remember that our mission is education, because all the kids, that isn't in their minds at all. isn't in their minds at all. You know, it's, oh, yeah, I got to get back to school. But I know what, just with the middle school kids and their, and their computers and some of the other things like that, I says, it just seems to be a great rallying September that we've had, you know, in the community and in the schools.
I agree. Yeah, Don?
I forgot, I forgot one thing here. This is, because it's coming up this week, I'll be too late if I wait. This is Saturday, September thirteenth, here at Oak Grove Middle School, from nine to twelve P.M. is the Autumn Society of Minnesota, the School District, and I think there's a couple other partners are partnering for families with disabilities on how to tell your story. So, they're having a workshop here.
Oh, great. And when is that again?
It's Saturday, the September thirteenth, from nine A.M. to twelve P.M.
Is it just in Oak Grove Middle in the auditorium, or?
It just says Oak Grove Middle, so I guess they'll have to look when they come in.
Okay, great. All right, well, I'll go last here. I did attend a nine-seven, District nine-seventeen Board Meeting. We went over and approved this year's goals. Attended the first day of school at the following schools. I was at Olson Elementary, went over to Jefferson High School, then went over to Indian Mounds Elementary, then went over to Valley View Elementary, and then ended up at Oak Grove Elementary, right across the lot here, where I was fortunate enough to sit into a second-grade class, where Principal Brian Klein was reading a book to the class, and I remember the name was, it's a very, it's a fine, fine, fine day, something, if anybody knows that book. There were a lot of fines in it. Anyways, the kids thought it was, was very, very interesting. Principal Klein asked, I think they knew what, what a school board did, and, and the second graders were fidgeting around, and one little girl raised her hand and, and nailed it. She knew exactly what the school board did, and then she added, my mom is the principal of the school board. So, she, she knew exactly what the, what the school board did, but I think she had mom's role a little backwards. That's okay. It was a lot of fun, and it was, it was really fun to see these kids. Jim, you mentioned that, you know, the energy, the kids are climbing off the bus, they're coming in, where do I go? And they're meeting, they're meeting their friends. I also had an opportunity to look at some of the construction that we did over the summer, just to make sure that it looks right, that things are put together, that walls aren't, the paint isn't, isn't in the wrong spot, and everything looks really good. Now, that's just a real quick glance at the entryways to the schools, but it was, it looked the way it was supposed to look. They were all put back together. Also had an opportunity to attend last week's, the Jefferson football game, and then just this last Friday with a bunch of my coworkers, the Kennedy football game. Outcomes were a little different for both of them, but a lot of high-octane fans, good energy in the crowd. It's kind of fun. I sit just a little bit farther away from the student section because I can, I can hear after the games there. Kevin Gribner does the play-by-play for Jefferson, and Joe does the Kennedy games, and does a great job, knows how to get right up close to the microphone and, and enunciate. Also wanted to make mention that I had the opportunity to, let's just say, I had the opportunity to be behind some buses, and, and I'm pleased to say that I'm not seeing people, at least my quick survey, I'm not seeing people zoom past the stop arms. It's, it's something that's, that I pay close attention to, and I sort of always have. I know that there was, I think it was Channel Eleven, that did something on the, the forward-facing cameras. And so, it's, it's really, really, really important to, to make sure that we stop, to make sure that we treat those stop arms as a red light. They're not a stop-and-go. It's a red light. When that stop arm is out, you stop. When it's retracted, and you look both ways, and the kids are in the bus, or they're off the bus, depending on what time of day it is, then you can go. So, I really appreciate the, the public keeping track of, of what's going on on the streets, making our students and staff safe. That's the end of my list. So, Superintendent?
I need to ask the Board to establish three Board Sessions. The first one, Administration requests a motion to establish a closed session for negotiations on Monday, September twenty-second, and it will begin at the conclusion of that night's Board Study Session.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Administration requests a motion to establish on Monday, October twentieth, at six-thirty P.M., a professional development session of the Board to talk about the new Achievement Integration Plan.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and that would be with?
Teamwork's international.
Yeah, teamwork, okay. All right, all those in favor?
What time was that? Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, October twentieth.
So, that's the date that we have set for the study sessions. We have no meeting that night, correct?
Yeah, that's the, the third Monday.
Third Monday, okay.
We're all busy writing here. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Administration requests a motion to establish on Monday, November seventeenth, at seven P.M., a public hearing to present our annual report to comply with the new World's Best Worklaw. And it's going to be held here at the Educational Service Center in this room, November seventeenth, at seven P.M.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all right. All those in, yeah, Rick?
So, I was looking, looking at that World's Best Workforce legislation, and do we have to do like a whole separate special meeting for that? Or is it vague enough where we could just include this as part of our regular Board meeting?
It needs to be a public hearing, so it should be a separate session. But it could be, it could be incorporated into a regular meeting, just like our truth in taxation.
So, is this, without having my calendar in front of me, I'm guessing this would be a third Monday, and not the second Monday?
Third.
Yeah. All right. Are we going to be doing any, required to do any voting in?
No.
Okay, so that can be held on that third Monday. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we're using up our third Mondays in the month.
The last is just informational to the viewing public. Heritage Days Parade and Festival is on September twentieth. The parade will begin at ten-thirty. The school board and all our schools will be represented in the parade, and I just looked on the computer, the fifteen-day forecast calls for seventy-five degrees and sunny.
Okay.
We've ordered it up special the last three years.
Right. That concludes my report.
All right, we're down to the other portion. Does anyone have anything else they want to add?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add one thing. With the referendum that passed with safety and security, I supported it. In the back of my mind, I was always saying, we're spending a lot of money on something that we're probably never going to use. But I still support it because just in case, I never, I don't want to be in a situation where I say, well, we could have, and we didn't. And so, on the third day of school, we had a fifteen-minute lockdown at one of our schools, and I just wanted to say that I'm very thankful. Nothing happened, it says in, in the notice that we got, that it was due to suspicious activity, and no students or staff were ever really in harm's way. But just in case, it was good to know that we were prepared, and that we had been proactive instead of reactive in our community. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the voters, and thank you to everyone who supported that referendum, because I think this really solidified that we did the right thing, made the right choice there.
Great, thank you.
Can I, can I just add to that, that since there has been media attention around our new security procedures, the school board and Superintendent's office all received letters from a person that, I guess he's in the security industry, asking some questions, and it was very nice to see the responses after he also had a conversation with Mr. Kaufman, and he was complimenting how wonderful it is that our district has done, gone forward with the measures that we've had, and that he was very impressed with the things that we've done for security. So, that's also a thank you to the community, that we know that we're on the leading edge of it, and that we're trying to do the best we can to keep everybody safe. So, thank you.
All right, yeah, Tom.
I just want to thank Missy and Amy for the delicious, the delicious samples. The salty bog are delicious.
I'm very, I think they're all for us.
And they're all mine.
I had to move mine away because they smelled too good.
And audience members will share after the meeting, if anyone wants to try some.
It's going to be empty by the time it gets there. Okay, anyone else? All right, so I guess we're looking for that, that motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all right, and we're going to call this one closed. Thanks, guys.
I want to try some of the stuff I have in my hand.